Luis Aguaviva. Nelson Velasquez, he left as well? Hector Guzman, Miriam Aquino, and Jessica Cardoza. Hector Guzman? Miriam Aquino? Jessica Cardoza. All right, the next three speakers will be Althea Matthews, Tomas Ramon, and Lois Mangione.
Good evening. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I was intrigued by these other testimony.
Could you move a little bit closer to the mic? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Althea Matthews. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I was so intrigued by the testimonies that I needed to ask for a rollback as well. The first time I spoke was in 2014, when I was at Hostess College, and I was compelled to speak then, you know, so when I spoke at that time, I was homeless, and now I finally have a room, which I was residing in for eight months now. And when I first testified for that rent freeze, it was because it would have been more of a hardship if the rent went up, because I'm on workers' compensation, I've been on it for a while, and I'm on a fixed income. So the rollback, maybe I can get an apartment, so I won't have to be shared, I mean, living in the room where prior I was sharing the room with a teenager, I done moved on up a little, you could say, you know, to private, a little privacy. Soon I would like to have my own place, and a rollback will help a lot. And all these people that had testified for all these complaints, I think these landlords, they getting all these other benefits, when is the tenant's going to get some benefits? And I think that a rollback will help them a lot, just so they can breathe and get on their feet as well. And there's somewhere, someone need to check out why these landlord can do what they've been doing. There's got to be something done about that. And I'm not against them making a profit, it's just how they doing it, you know, that we don't have, that we are not human or have any dignity, you know, to live in something decent like they living in, that's all. So on behalf of everybody, please, then consider it, you have the power. Thank you.
Thank you. Tomas Ramon. Lois Mangione. Maria Laudman. Deanna Hawkins. And Luis Garcia are the next speakers. Maria Laudman. Deanna Hawkins.
Okay, good evening, everyone on the panel and everyone here this evening. My name is Deanna Hawkins. I've lived in the Bronx almost my life. I live at my apartment, at my building, almost over thirty years, and I've never ever seen a rent decrease, it's always an increase. For the past two years, I've been experiencing tremendous harassment in my home, okay? Ceilings collapsed at midnight, the window fall on my neck, metal dust due to the landlord sawing off the radiator, which he did not need to do, which I could not breathe, and all this continuous harassment verbally, okay, and calling me names which he should not, and I think that's harassment, and I have suffered PTSD because of it, it's very stressful. Over the past year, up till April, I've received another dispossessed for non-payment of rent dating back to 2014, okay? And due to the stress that I've suffered over the past years, it's caused me to be stressed, where actually I was really seeing a counselor. I'm not here only because of myself, but because of others, and so many that are homeless. And today, I was walking down one seventy street under the underpass, and there are a lot of homeless people living there, and the condition is very bad, okay? So with the rent rollback, I believe that more people will stay in their homes because of all this increase over the past years, it is causing all this homelessness. And also with my attorney, it constantly keep harassing me, and also he have tried very hard to get Section Eight, okay, to terminate my lease because of non-payment of rent, which is mandacious, okay? So it's all these events that's happening, okay? I think, I believe that we should have a rent rollback.
Thank you. Luis Garcia. Luis Garcia. The next three speakers will be Marja Lomel, Saido Cabrera, and Zemen Jimenez. Any of them here? Marja? Saido Cabrera? Zemen Jimenez. The next three speakers will be Emmanuel Padillo. Maria Budram. And Sam Tenzer.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Emmanuel, and I'm a housing organizer for the Northwest Bronx Green Clergian Coalition. I do a lot of housing work in the Northwest Bronx. And I hate to sound redundant, but many of the stories I heard today are many of the stories I hear in the Northwest Bronx. This is happening across the borough and across the city. Tenants are going wintertime without heat. Tenants are experiencing MCIs. Tenants are being taken to court for no reason. They're being taken to court for no reason. They're being taken to court for cents. For a cent. For less than a dollar. And they don't have legal representation. They're forced to miss a day out of work just to go to court because their landlords harassing them. Many of my tenants are paying their rent. Many of my tenants are struggling to pay their rent. Many of my tenants are working-class people that work every single day to live in a decent home, and they're not living in a decent home. So why should the rent go up? The rent has no reason to go up. The rent should go down. The rent should go down. We want a rollback. What do we want? And I'm just gonna end by saying this. La renta sube, sube, y el pueblo sufre, sufre. That is the story of working-class people here in this city.
Maria Budram. Sam Tenzer. Is she coming up? Okay, is this Maria?
Good evening. My name is Maria Budram. I live at eighty-eight Eighth Grand Concourse. The worst landlord, janitor and bombard. Over the years, I live in that building from 2000. The building have roaches, rodent, garbage, the outside of the building deteriorate, water coming from the outside of the building into the inside of the building. He have one hundred and thirty-eight violation against him. To this date, no charge, nobody do anything, just hold him responsible for what we are bearing in that building. I'm a member of CASA. CASA been helping us to do what is right. Some repairs are done, and some is left behind. Where I'm asking you that, help us. In the winter, we have to boil water to carry to the bathroom. Three-fourth percent of our building are seniors, and consider a senior walking with a pot of hot water. It's not fair. Not fair at all. And he is living in a big house in Connecticut, enjoying his life, and nothing been done. We have no washroom, no dormant service, no elevator service, yet still, it is in our rent. You know, you talk about terrorism, he's the biggest terrorist in this country. He's holding a gun to our head, and nobody done nothing about it. I'm asking you, all on the table here tonight, not just hearing us, but listen to us, listen to our problem, and take it to whoever you bring it to, to help us and give us a rent rollback. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is Sam Tenzer here? Okay, thank you. The next speakers will be Angelus Ruiz, Rosalind Lewis, and Valerie Stephens. Any of them here?
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Rosalind Lewis, and I was here to say a lot of things, but everybody here seems to have the same problem that I do. We need a rent rollback. We don't just need a rollback, we have to have a rollback. We also need people in our favor in our court. That court system over there, housing court, is a criminal court. They do not do anything for us. They don't even listen to us. We are nothing if we don't bring in money. It's a big-boy club, that's what they tell you when you walk through the door, because they all have lunch together, and they all consider us nothing. I just left there yesterday. I could be put out tomorrow. Nobody listens. I lived in my apartment, I lived twenty-one hundred T-Ball Avenue for twenty years, which supposed to be rent control, supposed to be this tax law program, we done everything. But our rent is not low. They look at our building and say we live in the projects. I paid twelve hundred dollars to live in the projects. It's not fair. When I go to court, I talk the same way I talk now, but nobody listens because they don't care. They all think we're liars, cheaters, and don't want to pay rent. That's what they say, but that's not true. We need help, and we need help now, not tomorrow, yesterday. And we need a rollback, and we need justice, so that we would not be criminals all that life. It's not fair. And the older people, they don't even listen to the older people. That's what makes me mad. The people that has worked, put their time in, just like the same way I have, but nobody listens. They tell us to tell our kids to have education, for what? Who's gonna listen? Who are listening now? These people? Our people? The rollbacks now. Good night.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Valerie Stephens. I'm a current tenant from twenty-one twenty T-Ball Avenue, where I lived there for twenty-five years. There were several different landlords over the years, and what happened was I wound up losing my Section Eight, being evicted out of my apartment, where I lived with black mold and, um, black mold and mildew, mines dropping and all of that, all things of that nature. In 2011, I took the landlord to court. I had been paying my rent the whole entire time. I wound up losing my Section Eight, being evicted out of the apartment. Currently, I'm in the shelter for three years. I've emailed the mayor, the governor, the Senator Snyderman, all of these different agencies, right? And like, I was trying to request that my Section Eight be returned to me, because what happened was I put in a, New York City had done so much, well, let me calm down. What happened was the landlord had been taking rent, where I have paperwork that states back to 2005 that the partner was hazardous. I complained about moving since 2005 nineteen, well, way before that, in 1998. The landlord continuously accepted rent, when he knew he was not entitled to. Somewhere along the lines, there was somebody was in somebody's pocket. Currently, I'm in the shelter, myself and my foster child, for three years. I pay rent to stay where I'm at, and also I pay for storage, where I'm in a built two-bedroom apartment. They built it because it was one bedroom, they turned it into two, okay? I have no other choice but to pay to stay there, because like, I don't really want to be on the street, and this child is a foster child, and not only that, I'm paying four hundred dollars a month for storage, for my person who belongs to be in storage. It's not fair. What I'm saying, why I'm here today is to prevent a lot of these people from ending up in my situation. I've been fighting for three years, I'm not gonna give up, because like, really what I want returned to me would be my Section Eight, because currently I was paying a hundred and twenty-eight dollars a month rent. Currently, I'm paying two fifty and plus paying four hundred dollars a month for storage, and it's not fair. It's not fair because like, the city of New York, they knew about this plan that was going to take effect when all of these storage houses were being built. This was planned. The low-income housing was not made affordable to us, because I had been applying for three years. Being that I got in touch with the mayor and the governor and all of these people, now they're telling me that I have a red flag on my name downtown. So that means, I guess I'm gonna have to leave the city to go find decent, affordable housing. And that's all I want. All I want right now is affordable, decent housing, like everyone else, because I'm quite sure all of you are going home to a decent apartment. You know? You are. And for Scott over here, I watched him all night, he doesn't even really want to be here. He's sitting there making faces and frowning and all that, but I know like, none of you up there would want to change places with me. Thank you.
The next speakers are Philadelph Ramirez, Faye Suavi, and Robert Bouafou-Awah. Philadelph Ramirez. Faye Suavi. Robert Bouafou-Awah.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I would like to begin by thanking the board, the panel, for coming to hear grievances. I also would like to thank the landlords for investing in real estate so that we can get places to live. And what I would like to say is that I, my name is Robert Bouafou, I live at eleven-eleven Gerard Avenue, and I've been living there for seventeen years. I don't have any inclination to move out of the apartment. I mean, I want to, I like the place I live, and I want to live there for quite some time. Incidentally, my landlord probably has a different idea, because I, whenever I look at my rent, in the recent past, I've been seeing two different rents listed. So I guess, I'm guessing that he's probably trying to slowly push the rent to the higher rent that is listed on the rent. And what I would like to tell you is that, please, I'm appealing to all of you that you are here because we know you have the power to do something. And what I would like to let you know is that, please, do not withhold good from another person, especially weaker person, if it's in your power to do so. So I'm encouraging you to please do the right thing. And also to the landlords, please, rolling back the rent is not going to impoverish you. It's probably, it's probably going to reduce the profits, but you are not going to get impoverished. We are not asking for this rollback because we want to enrich ourselves. I mean, I would like to get extra money to go to school, to improve myself, but I know I cannot do that because I can barely even pay my bills. So I would like to make an appeal to you, please, do not withhold good from another person, if it's in your power to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Marco Angel, Emmanuel Yasuf, and Margarita Medina.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Marco Angel, and I'm a CASA member. I live at fourteen-seventy-five Sheridan Avenue, and my landlord is Finkelstein and Timberger. As you already heard, my landlord is the MCI king. Since renewal rent increases are not sufficient, they've taken advantage of the law and used MCIs in an attempt to drastically increase my rent and that of my fellow tenants. This is for work that was not necessary, shoddy at best, and not done professionally. Finkelstein and Timberger and other landlords know that the Bronx is up and coming, and they would want to capitalize on this. However, they want to capitalize at the expense of myself, the elderly, the middle, and the middle and working class. The landlords want to kick us out and gentrify the Bronx with tenants that will show them the money and pay them the high rents that they desire. I have lived in the Bronx for over thirty years and would love to remain here. This is my home. It's been the best of times and worst of times, but the Bronx is my home. Every year, it is getting harder and harder for me to pay the rent and my school loans. A rent rollback will help me and my fellow Bronxites make ends meet. I implore you to have the courage to make history again by voting for a rent rollback. God bless you all. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Emmanuel Yasuf.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Emmanuel Yasuf. I lived in the Bronx here for nineteen years, eleven-eleven Gerard Avenue. I ask you tonight to please rollback the rent. The reason being that all these testimonies are true. I thank God that I belong to CASA. I am a member, and I'm one of the leaders. When I go CASA, I learned a lot about my responsibility paying my rent. Not behind, because my rent go directly from my bank to the landlord. They accuse me of not paying directly to them because they did not arrange with the bank, you know, to cash in until about ten days, and they inflate twenty-five dollars late payment. However, I refuse to pay that. But the reason I'm talking to you about this, honestly, CASA is the community that really get everybody together to do the right thing. We do not hate landlords. We hate those that are cheating the public. Abusing the public, harassing the public. And my building, that I've been living for nineteen years, have been sold to three different landlords. Now, the current landlord has sold our community room, where we have gathering like this, and we teach each other like computer class and so many other things. Our parking lot have been sold, because you can walk from eleven-eleven Gerard Avenue five minutes, easy walking to Yankee Stadium. Forty dollars, forty-five dollars, up to sixty dollars a pop when there is game. Now, the building is getting bad, getting bad, and getting bad, and getting worse. Rodents, rats, and everything. The supers, they cannot cope with the situation. The children's place where the downstairs have been paved, it was padded before, and the kids, they just running away. If you go there now, there are cameras that they don't work. There was a rape that the police, up to now, they cannot solve because the cameras are not working. It's a camouflage over there. So I am retired, seventy-two years old. I can barely eat, and I can still do all the things that I can do, but it's no job. I cannot find a job, okay? So therefore, the rent is too much, and we want to roll back the rent. And if you do the right thing, we are talking to you, and now sincerely, you know what we going through. Effection is the highest in the boroughs. Bronx here, why? You know why? Because somebody, the lady said that no matter what you said, and the court over there, they don't listen to you. Maybe few people, not to exaggerate. So therefore, I'm asking you, please, you can sleep easy if you do the right thing, and you know what we talking about. We hate no landlord. We hate those that are cheating us. They are really cheating us. That's what we are talking about. Ladies and gentlemen, God bless you, and you sleep well tonight by doing the right thing. Thank you.
Margarita Medina. Margarita Medina, is she here? The next three speakers are Juana Nivar, Esti Agolia, and Martina Rivera. Juana Nivar? Okay, thank you. Esti Agolia?
Good evening, panels.
Good evening.
My name is Esti Agolia. I live at ten oh six Gerard Avenue, Bronx, New York, for sixteen years. And when I was living there, the old management, I had no problem with them until this management came over. For ten years now, I've been receiving harassment in my apartment. Can you imagine you living in apartment and leaving the apartment to sleep in the train? Can you imagine you living in apartment, leaving the apartment to sleep at the shelter? Can you imagine you living in apartment, leaving the apartment to sleep in a friend's house? I've received all kinds of harassment. My home was invaded, my house, my walls was vandalized, the ceiling kept coming down, the super invaded into my home, vandalizing my properties, many things is going on. Because of this new management, they are doing everything to evict me. Through this management now, I lost my job, I'm not working. I was in school, I came for the American dream to this country. I've lived in the Bronx for twenty-seven years. I live in that apartment for sixteen years. I was there with my mother until she left, but still, I'm receiving harassment. So because of this harassment, I want the rent to be rolled back, because if the rent is rolled back, I could even move to a better place, but with this kind of increase in rent, I cannot move, I cannot afford the present rent. Right now, I'm facing eviction. Please, help us to have a fixed rollback rent. Have a blessed night.
Thank you. Martina Rivera?
Very good evening to all. My name is Martina Rivera. I live in the eight twenty-five Gerard Avenue.
Just a moment, let's get the interpreter.
Good evening to all. My name is Martina Rivera. I live at eight twenty-five Gerard Avenue.
Good night, everybody. My name is Martina Rivera, and I live at eight twenty-five Gerard Avenue.
The owner of this building is Belpar Katz. I've been in this building for three years, and it's been a pain for me. I feel humiliated, discriminated, humiliated, as a human being.
The landlord of that building is Brad Prokash. I've been there
I've been there for three years and it's been a nightmare during those three years. I feel indignation, I feel discriminated against, I feel humiliated there. When you call the office, there's nobody there who speaks English and nobody there who speaks Spanish. He doesn't care about taking phone calls, he just cares about collecting rent. Right now, I... Right, I'm paying more than fifty percent of my income in rent. I'm paying... Twelve hundred dollars a month in rent. I am a widow. My husband died of a heart attack. Pues como, as a widow with a child with autism, this is, I can't afford this, it's very difficult for me. And I'm appealing to you to help us resolve this. I know that you might be in a situation where your income is higher than ours and you might not find yourself in our situation, but I'm appealing, I'm asking you to please. So please take this into account, note that this is affecting our health, that this is affecting our well-being, and I appeal to your sense of justice. I left my country fleeing injustice and came here. I've been here fifteen years. I've paid my rent every month, every year, and I ask you to be sensitive to that and to please just give us justice. That's all we're asking, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Rosemary Ophilly, Rosalyn Loras, and Alonso Lilfi.
Hello, good evening, Madam Chair and the rest of the panel. My name is Rosemary Ophilly and I live at 910 Grand Concourse, two blocks from here actually. I, let's see, first of all, my building had been going through an MCI. I'd like someone to explain to me why, how the MCIs work, why after you've recouped your, what you've put in to make repairs, you keep getting money over and over for as long as the building is in existence and then you come up with another MCI. I'm going through an MCI right now and also my lease is expiring, so you're going to be making money twice. So I'd like to understand, when the mayor talks about a tale of two cities, what city is he referring to? You know, because you're talking about affordable housing. What can not all of us qualify for affordable housing? So for the rest of us who don't qualify, what is affordable? You know, I would like for someone to explain to me what is affordable. Then another point I'd like to make is if you live in a building, I think the rent also covers services. So if the super isn't making repairs, you know, should we deduct, you know, for the super not doing the work or for the building not being maintained? Because that's what we're paying for. So I'd like someone to explain to me how that works. So why do our rent keep going up when we're not getting the services that we deserve? And then secondly, why do the landlords keep complaining about, oh, they can't make ends meet or maintaining the building when you're not maintaining the building or you're, well, putting up with shoddy work or you're making profit from MCIs? I don't understand that. So please, someone explain that to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Rosalyn Loras here? Alonso Lilfi or Lilf? Okay, the next three speakers are Alta Gracia Jorge, Deanna Daniels, and George Sotiroff. Alta Gracia Jorge? Deanna Daniels? Okay, thank you. George Sotiroff? I'm sorry?
I'm just going to testify on behalf of Deanna. Hi, my name is Deanna Daniels and I'm with CASA. I live at 750 Grand Concourse and I've been there for one and a half years. I live in a Ved Parkash building slated as the number one slumlord. I live in a studio apartment that costs eleven-fifty a month with my offspring. The building has great potential but horrible conditions. Tenants have taken the landlord to court. We had no heat, hot water, no gas for two months, et cetera. I am starting over and live on a fixed budget, making low hourly wages and struggle with my monthly expenses. I'm sad that the Bronx is depicted atrociously on TV when this is not the case everywhere, but to Manhattan nights. And new transplants, our rents are affordable and cheaper than other boroughs, but once here, they too see through the beauty of the town we are taken advantage of and become disadvantaged with unsafe conditions, conditions with rats, repairs, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. Is George Sotiroff here?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening, panel. My name is George Sotiroff. I'm a resident of 901 Walton Avenue. I've lived there since 1981. I want to admit that this is, this body here is a city. You have a responsibility and you don't have a mandate to handle stuff from Albany. However, that being said, I just want to also, for the sake of my comments, mention or say that...
Could you just speak up a bit? I'm having trouble hearing you.
I'm sorry. For the sake of my comments, I just want to say that I will assume that every one of you lives in a bubble and you have no influence with anybody in Albany or anywhere else. However, now I will admit that I'm not a lawyer, but I will say that when a man goes to Atlantic City and he wants to sit at the table and play the games, roulette, wheel, blackjack, whatever it is, I know that he is not permitted to reach into any one of your pockets to pay for his play. I know that. However, a landlord can come in and have MCIs and spend, then reach into my pocket to pay for it, and I resent that. And you can't do anything about the MCI, but what you can do is make sure that you don't pile on a rent increase on top of the MCI. Because if that MCI goes through and it has a good chance of going through, by the time it is fully implemented, my rent will have increased by more than thirty percent. And I want you to keep that in mind because you may not be able to do anything in Albany, but you sure can do something here. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Vanessa Magici or Magici? Is Vanessa here? Okay, Jose Gonzalez?
I'll be giving testimony today on behalf of Jose Gonzalez. My name is Jose Gonzalez and I am a member of the Superintendent's Technical Association. What I have to say is that there needs to be a system of monitoring the issues from tenants and landlords. In some cases, the tenant, the landlord isn't knowledgeable enough to make a decision about how to invest in efficient heating systems and hot water heating systems. In some cases, the super cannot multitask, so it backs up. My statement here to you as a board is that you need to evaluate the qualifications of owners and supers. It is possible to make repairs and still have affordable rents. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Ram Narin, April Hurley, and Norma Ortiger. Ram Narin? April Hurley?
Hi, good evening. Thank you for being here, thank you for your time. Thank you to everyone who came out and spoke. I just wanted to share my story. When I was younger, my mom owned a house. She was a nurse, she couldn't afford it. We got evicted after she had been paying her rent. Before she got evicted, she moved out because she wasn't going to be able to afford the rent and she was going back and forth with the lawyer, I mean, with the landlord, trying to see if he would help her out since she had been living there for a long time. Long story short, he did not help her out. She was going to be evicted and we end up moving into an apartment with a friend. I stand to say that a rent freeze would not, it wouldn't even be able, it wouldn't even allow me to survive. A rent freeze would just make me suffer more. I would, we need a rollback in order for us to, just to be able to catch up like other people have spoken tonight. A rollback would allow us just time to breathe and to be able to get on our two feet. Now, I am trying to follow the American dream, whatever that means, and go to college and try to, you know, establish myself and I'm still struggling, like my mom is still struggling and my family is still struggling and now it's just a cycle of poverty is being continued because the rent that we pay is fifty percent of what we earn. So if you do have a good paying job, you're still paying more out of your pocket just to live in a decent home. You're still forced to make just sacrifices so you can live in a decent house. And another point that I was looking at, that I just thought of was, you know, it's not even the fact that we live with mice and roaches and like sanitary and unsecure conditions, it's also that our apartments are unsightly, you know? Paint, paint the walls, put in security cameras, you know, just beautification, like the simplest things landlords should do, they're not even doing, much less taking care of the necessary repairments. So I do ask that you please consider us and vote for a rollback. Thank you, good night.
Thank you. Norma Ortiger? Is Norma Ortiger here?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone else who hasn't already spoken who would like to speak this evening? Yes? Please, please let us know your name.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Davi. I'm an organizer with CASA and living in Venezuela before I came to New York, my parents always told me, let's, we need to move to the country of equality. And working at CASA, it has shown me that there is no equality between tenants and landlord. When tenants, they had to go to the housing court. It's incredible that ninety-nine percent of the landlord, they have legal representation and only one percent of the tenant does. Working at CASA and going to different buildings to speak and build relationship with tenants, it has shown me that the landlord, they just want to take money out of the packets of tenants. People who are hardworking, who've been working two and three jobs to support their family and it still is not enough to pay the rent and sometimes they're being evicted from their apartment because they can't afford where they live right now. So it actually made me think, if we living in this country and most of the people, when you go to the housing court, they being evicted from their apartment because they can't afford when they leave, what we're going to do is we have a rent increase. And in New York, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard who hasn't already spoken? All right, you can come forward if you want to be heard. I think we need an interpreter. And could we have your name, please?
Well, I'm here tonight, I came because I want to testify about my experience, what's happened to me. When I first came to this country, I was really eager to come here. I came because I heard, I was told that things were great here and that there were jobs to be had, there was work to do. Diga su nombre también, por favor.
Erasmo de la Rosa Cuevas.
Erasmo? De la Rosa.
Sí, Erasmo de la Rosa.
Erasmo?
De la Rosa.
De la Rosa.
Sí.
So he had, you know, he had a four thousand dollar deposit that he was living off, which has now disappeared because he lost his job and he's unable to find a new job. So after he lost his job because he has a vision problem and he's unable to write, so he had to stop working and his son, whose picture he's holding, said, you know, Dad, what are you going to do? You can't work right now, you can't pay the rent. And he said, you know, it's like he felt bad about it, but he said, don't worry because God has other ways, God will provide. So I'm paying twelve hundred and some, twelve hundred and change, and I know that the landlord has power, has the power to come to an accommodation or so to help me out.
Okay.
So recently, on an occasion where I told the super to come and fix some small repairs in the house, and while he was there, he said, you know, I'd like to get a chance to meet the landlord so I can have a chance to speak with them. Right, so the super said, well, you can't talk to him because he only speaks English and you don't. And he said, don't worry, if, you know, if I need to communicate with him, I will. I would just, I could just lead him by the hand and show him the situation in this apartment and show him how the toilet's always broken and that's, this is situations I have to live with. So in that case, he said that, you know, when that happened, he told the super, well, you see, that's, that's what needed to happen. And then...
No lo arregló.
All right, so in that case, three days later, the super came back with materials and did the repairs, but it's not being fixed and it's kept, and like there were problems with the bathroom still.
Bueno, yo le agradezco, yo le agradezco al Ando porque él hizo todo el esfuerzo conmigo. Me fue y me mandó arreglar eso. Y él puede arreglarlo, ayudar a todo el mundo que quiera, si él puede. No es con ofensa, sino por voluntad de él, que quiera. Es todo.
So I'm grateful to the landlord for seeing that those repairs were made, and I know that he could help us out and that he could, you know, help us come to an accommodation as well. And that's everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Hi, my name is Valerie Speller, and I live in Langston Property Services Building. I've been here for some years. I just want to talk about most of the tenants that live there, especially the elderly who are now receiving SSI, Social Security, and the rent has went up. And what happens to them when they decide they can't afford it? Have a tenant in there that's in a wheelchair and can't get in and out of his apartment unless another tenant helps him down these steps. We've called so many people to try to help him, and now what they want to do is get him out that apartment and put him in an apartment that is much smaller. He can't afford his rent because he gets SSI. When a person moves out of those apartments that are like probably four-hundred-and-fifty dollars, five-hundred dollars apartment, then they decide they want to fix the apartment up and then charge somebody fifteen-hundred dollars, which is not fair at all. I've been there for so many years, and I refuse to leave. I make it happen in my apartment. You are going to... It's a must. You are going to respect me, and you're gonna do as I ask you to do, because I pay rent. The landlord, you meet that landlord one time when you sign that lease, but that individual do not come out and visit that apartment or that building to see how drug-infested it is, how much rats and roaches they have up in there. They need to see that before thinking about raising somebody's rent. These seniors do not want to be forced in a nursing home because they're so independent. Let's help them, please. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who hasn't already spoken who'd like to be heard?
Could we have your name, please?
My name is Judith Maurichon, and I have lived in 1310 Sheridan Avenue for the past twenty-two years. In the twenty-two years, we have changed landlord about five or six different times. I'm retired, and I'm on a fixed income. My biggest problem is in the winter, that there is no heat, there is no hot water. I have a lot of doctor's appointments, and I have to, like, heat water from the kitchen and take to the bathroom, or get up at two o'clock in the morning in order to wash up to go to my doctor's appointment. I mean, there's basic things that I need. I'm tired of these little mice running up and down the apartment. It's unbelievable. It's unbelievable. At my age, I don't think that I should be going through that. I have worked all my life. I raised my children. Now, my age, I need to have some kind of dignity. I mean, if I can't sleep in the winter, in the summer it's worse. I need a paying job. When I complain, it's like no one is listening to me. And because I can't afford to move, it's that I have to suffer. Can... If one of you panels up there can experience one night at 1310 Sheridan Avenue, you would understand what I'm talking about. It's hard, and it's difficult. I have a medical problem that, you know, got me going off and back and forth to the doctor, and most of the time I'm stressed out. I didn't, you know, retire to just be going through this with a landlord. Back and forth, two-day rent demand. I have Section Eight. My rent is based on my income, but it doesn't matter. He wants more, and I can't give him what he wants. Washing machine fee? I don't even have a washing machine. They came to my apartment and took my air conditioner out the window because I didn't have the correct brackets. So I asked the super, "If I pay you, can you put the air conditioner back on?" "Oh, no, that's not my job." The air conditioner is sitting in my living room on the floor, and he's still charging me five dollars a month. But when I got involved with CASA about four or five years ago, I realized that I didn't have to pay him four or five dollars, because the previous landlord never collected air conditioner fee from me, and he is not supposed to come in and demand it from me. Demand it! So I would really like a rent rollback. When I sit there, I wasn't going to say anything, but after listening to all these people, it's like I want my story to be heard also. A rent rollback, it's like it will benefit from me. Not only do I have to heat up my apartment... I forgot the most important part is my Con Ed bill is high when I have to heat my apartment up. Money that I don't have. I don't have. Like I just said, a rent rollback will be appreciated. And if one of you, anyone in the panel who would like to spend one night at 1310 Sheridan Apartment 3B, please, you would understand what I'm saying.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to be heard? Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So I'm just concerned... We sent requests for questions. They come to testify before us. HPD came to testify before us over a month ago, and we had sent them questions, and we asked them to answer. When they came, they said they hadn't the opportunity to respond to the questions, and they'd get back to us. Now, it's a week before our final hearing, and we still have no answers to those questions. And I want to know what we're doing about getting those answers.
Have we heard anything from HPD?
The last I heard, they were still working on gathering the data. This was about a week ago. I got an email from them. So I'll follow up again tomorrow and see.
I do think it's if we're... We said specifically we wanted questions from HPD. We wanted questions to HPD. We made the effort to write questions to them. They came to testify, and then we're gonna make a decision without that information. I feel like that's really problematic.
Well, what we can do is get in touch with them tomorrow and express our concern about not having the answers to the questions in time for our vote.
More than our vote, because we have to submit things by Wednesday. We need before we... Next Wednesday is our deadline to submit proposals for the guideline, so that hopefully will inform all our decisions. So we really need the information before next Wednesday.
All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? I've heard a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? We are in adjournment.